Thanks for your support.
Let's go on, Emma.
Hmm?
It's like, yeah, it's probably like.
This witness.
I think the pollen and allergies just, Worris never had.
Oh, really? Yeah. They say her pollen has increased like twenty-five percent.
It's up bad on her, she's.
Yeah, and I'm fine when I wake up, it's about ten o'clock, it just. And then two about one, or support would be when I woke up, it'd go to two about eleven.
Use, I use that nasal.
Well, I've got.
Cortisone, that helps.
I don't do that, but I do do some nasal. I, I've taken.
I don't have to take any allergies, I just use that nasal cortisone. Yeah, it works, it's still.
Yes. Extremely.
I'd take one and make a work, and it's on such a different.
Yeah.
Really? I didn't know.
Yeah.
That's why nasal surgery, they said, use this nasal.
Yeah. I get it.
Okey doke, uh, let's get this underway, welcome to the April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four City North Platte Planning Commission meeting. Uh, roll call, please.
Davies.
Here.
McEwen.
Here.
Matthews.
Here.
Bane.
Here.
Van Velson.
Here.
Fudge.
Here.
Jett.
Here.
Forbes. And Worrell.
Here.
Forum is present.
Current copy of the Open Meetings Act to the State of Nebraska is posted on the wall, just to your right as you walked in, if you need to consult that. Item number two on the agenda tonight, it's approval of minutes for the meeting held on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, I trust you've all had a chance to read those ever so intently.
Second.
Motion by Bane, seconded by McEwen to approve as presented, any more discussion on that? Not, Michelle, please. And the minutes are approved. Item number three. Discuss and consider action. On an application by Blue Sky Development LLC for Village Park Flats first subdivision located on West A Street between Dixie Avenue and Pioneer Drive in a PR three dwelling district on property described as Block Three. Lakeview first subdivision, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, this is file number SU twenty-three dash zero one eight, Judy.
Okay, so, um, attached to the review comments, you should have had a copy of the preliminary and final plat. The subdivision will split one parcel into fifty-six lots for phase one, and at completion, the entire development will consist of approximately a hundred thirty lots. Planning staff has no objections to the approval of Village Park Flats first subdivision. The proposed subdivision meets zoning and subdivision regulations. If this looks vaguely familiar, it is, we saw it about six months ago. Um, they changed a little bit, so. Um, the original one that you saw would have just been Block One and Block Two, which are the blocks off of Preston Avenue, the blocks off of Dixie, and then the north. Um, two blocks, Block Two and Block Three, north of that Elizabeth Avenue, with the other blocks to the south of Elizabeth Avenue being just one large block. So they've, um, decided to subdivide that piece, so that's why you're saying this again.
Questions?
Uh, so what block is the, is Block Four, both sides, fronts Elizabeth and fronts? The private road off West Day?
Um, yeah, that's Block Four and Block Five.
Has twelve lots?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
It's weird to see you over there, Mr. Van Velson.
I miss you too.
Any other questions, comments?
Are you looking for the private road, is that just access?
Um, that's the private road to the south, yeah, it's to provide. Um, yes, they will still have A Street addresses.
There's no off-street parking on A Street.
Yeah, and you can't come into the drive off of A Street, because we can't have that many drives. Yep, so that just gives them an access, yep, that's a good idea.
Any other questions? If not, there's a proposed motion down there.
I move to approve file number SU two-three dash zero one eight preliminary and final approval of Village Park Flats first subdivision.
Second.
Motion by Davy, seconded by Jett to approve the final subdivision. Any other discussion? I will be abstaining on this, on the recommendation of an ADC. Michelle, please. And the motion is approved. Does it need to go to council?
Yes, this will go to council on the seventh of May.
Okay. Item number four is a public hearing discussing consider action on a resolution regarding extremely blighted determination study for North Platte, Nebraska, March twenty twenty-four, is prepared. By information art and make recommendation on whether the real estate described should be declared extremely blighted for the development of the city of North Platte pursuant to the Nebraska Community Development Law. The study includes an estimated sixteen, uh, one point six nine, uh, seven nine acres, generally the entire block between East Third and East Second Street. And between North Chestnut Street and North Walnut Street, as described as lots one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. Block one sixty-five, original town, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, Judy.
Okay, and you should have all received a copy of the review comments, attached to that is a resolution, and then attached to that is the extreme blight study. The planning commission's responsibility in the extremely blighted determination study process is to take public comment on whether the real estate described should be declared extremely blighted pursuant to Nebraska Community Development Law, and if the study is in conformance with legislative requirements. The following statement should be considered and confirmed. The property as presented in the study has been declared blighted, or excuse me, substandard, the property as presented in the study has been declared blighted. The property is a substandard and blighted area in which the average rate of unemployment in the area during the period covered by the most recent federal decennial census is at least two hundred percent of the average rate of unemployment in the state during that same period, and the property is a substandard and blighted area in which the average poverty rate in the area exceeds twenty percent for the total federal census tract or tracts or federal census block group or block groups in the area. That development of this property to its full potential is in the best interest of the city of North Platte and the entire region, and that there are projects ready to develop if they can meet the financial goals. Nebraska State Statute eighteen dash twenty-one oh three-three regulates the percentage of city limits that may be declared blighted and substandard pursuant to community development law. And states a city of the first class shall not designate more than thirty-five percent of the city as blighted. Currently, the city limits of North Platte contains eleven thousand eight hundred sixty-seven point three seven acres with two thousand eight hundred thirty-three point one three acres designated as blighted and substandard, which is twenty-three point eight seven percent. Reasons a developer may ask for extreme blight designation is to allow for state income tax credit for qualified home buyers, special funding preferences to affordable housing developers, and a maximum of twenty years for the use of TIF for qualified redevelopment projects. Attached is a copy of the study, um, planning staff recommends approval of the study and passage of the attached resolution. The study is in conformance with legislative requirements under Nebraska Community Development Law. Extremely blighted designation provides benefits not only to developer, but also home buyers in the area. By declaring this area as extreme blight, the city will remain below the thirty-five percent designated blighted and substandard areas, leaving acres available for future blight and substandard declarations. The project is proposing workforce and affordable housing apartments that would be benefit to the city of North Platte and the entire region. Um, if you have any questions, I will try and answer those for you, um, we do have the developer in the audience, if you have any questions for him.
Okay, uh, this is a public hearing, as well as the last item on our agenda tonight are both public hearings, so the following rules will apply to both. Planning Commission values your input, wants to hear from the audience during the public hearings, anyone wishing to speak must first be recognized by the chair. Once recognized, please approach the podium, state your name and address, please keep your comments less than, well, brief as possible. Repetitive and excessively long testimony may be ended at this discretion of the chair, and with that, the public hearing is open, who would like to come talk about this one? Mr. Burwick, come on up.
Hi, Charles Burwick, uh, two twelve West Circle Drive, North Platte. Um, so what we're proposing here is a twenty-eight unit apartment complex, uh, two fourteen unit buildings, there's gonna be, um, there'll be twelve two-bedroom, uh, one-bath units, that'll be approximately one thousand fifty square feet with four three-bed, two-bath units at the corners of, uh, of the northwest and southwest, uh, portion of the lot. That'll be sixteen hundred, basically sixteen hundred fifty square feet. Um, we are, uh, if you, if you guys know specifically where this lot is, you know, just east of the federal building, I don't know if you know, there's probably a hundred and change trees on the lot that ninety percent of them will need to be removed. Um, there is the, according to Dave Hahn, probably the oldest transformer in the, uh, city of North Platte. Uh, currently, uh, there, that is right in smack dab middle of the, um, alley, that will be a, initially, we don't have a firm quote yet, but approximately three hundred thousand dollars just to update the transformer and bury it, so that we can, um, move forward with the project. The, the lot itself is kind of unique in the sense that, um, everything running east is buried, going to the federal building, everything running west on the property is raised. Um, and so we have some buried lots, lines right there, but right where that oldest transformer is, it's been kind of, you know, modified over the years, but not removed, um, to been updated, so it is in dire need of update. Um, and so the first, I don't know how many thousands, you know, five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars is gonna be just to get the lot ready, uh, to build on.
Any questions for Mr. Burwick?
Houses that sit on that lot?
There are two, uh, houses that sit in the lot, uh, one is in rough shape at best, and one's in pretty good condition, we're not planning on doing anything with those at that time. So we're fitting, and then with the idea that, that we're either gonna use that for green space in the future, if, um, if we don't do something or build like a community, um, you know, like center for, for the people in those apartment complexes.
Are those buildings occupied at this time?
They are occupied, they're gonna stay occupied for the duration, um, it's really at the behest of the seller. Uh, they, you know, they're, they're good friends with, uh, with the people that are staying there, or that have been long-term renters at least. And so, um, at the behest of the sellers, we are, um, we're not gonna be doing anything for the foreseeable future with them.
Do you have a feel for what those will rent for?
The apartments?
Yes.
Yeah, um, so the two-bedroom, one-bath units, we're looking to, uh, to get about eleven hundred, um, uh, dollars a month, and then the three-bed, two-bath, uh, between fifteen and sixteen hundred.
And that's affordable?
Uh, per, you know, when I've, when I've met with, uh, the state in Nebraska, so I've talked with a couple folks at the state in Nebraska, um, you know, that's well within the, the limits, you know, when, when you're talking about twenty-five percent of the, um, you know, economic, when, when you're talking about, you know, median household incomes, we're well, we're well in that reach, you know, um, but to be perfectly honest with you, at the cost of the building, if we're rent, even with any TIF money, anything we get from the government, you know, we're already going to be, you know, right at, any, anything less, you know, wouldn't, it wouldn't really be affordable to, you know, there would be no margin at all, you know, it'd be too big of a risk. So we're hoping to potentially get more in rent, but, you know, I mean, I think eleven hundred dollars for a, almost eleven hundred square foot apartment is, um, is pretty affordable, and, you know, with what building costs are these days.
And there's an alley down the middle?
There is an alley down the middle, yeah.
Looking at being vacated, or?
No, we're not gonna vacate it, we're gonna, we will pave over it for a, a parking lot, so it'll be an entrance, but there's gonna, that's actually the whole reason why we're gonna have two separate buildings. There're gonna be two identical buildings, and the alley's gonna cut the middle of it. Um, there's sewer lines, there's electrical lines, there's telephone lines, all going down that, and that was gonna be about another five hundred thousand dollars to move, so. We modified our project based on that.
And parking, then, is there parking in garages?
No. There's, there's gonna be, um, approximately forty-eight to fifty parking spaces that we're gonna have, you know, uh, right, uh, right outside.
Street.
Yeah, yeah, well, not, nothing's about the street, it's gonna be inside.
Paved off the alley?
Exactly.
Okay.
So there's gonna be a huge paved parking lot, um, and then we're also have green space for, uh, for a dog park, because it's gonna be a dog-friendly units.
You gotta do it.
Based on the drastic need, based on everybody's request for, uh, you know, is this a dog-friendly rental unit, so, we're gonna try to meet the needs of North Platte.
How many total, Charlie, I'm sorry?
Twenty-eight.
It is twenty-eight total, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any more questions? Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Anybody else want to talk on this one? Gary?
Gary Pearson, President, North Platte Area Chamber Development Corporation, five oh two South Dewey. Um, this is a, a great example of a, a micro-tiff project, right, and kind of in the heart of our downtown. I can't tell you, uh, lost count how many, uh, potential developers I've visited with about this particular property, it's always been an, an eyesore, it's kind of almost an embarrassment to North Platte with all the cool things we got going on, uh, in downtown North Platte, to have that lot, uh, look, um, pretty trashy and overgrown vegetation and trees, and, and, uh, and so Mr. Burwick's, uh, commitment to do this, uh, um, means a lot to the community, he's already made a huge commitment to downtown, and the historic district purchased the building and remodeled several apartments in the upstairs area. Um, he's been looking for other developments, and so he, he, uh, sat down with me and we, uh, kind of strategized where potential locations are, and of course, this is one of the, uh, locations that came up. Uh, and I just think it's a, it's a great thing, we're North Platte, it fits right into the wheelhouse of everything the Chamber Development Corporation's trying to do to enhance housing. Um, and kind of in relationship to this, been a, a little bit different subject, uh, just kind of want to give you an awareness on this, but, uh, with all the exciting things we have going on, and everybody knowing we need an infusion of new housing, and, uh, we have an opportunity to capture, uh, investment uh, in some of the distressed areas of the community, like, never before, perhaps, you know, as the, the aging conditions persist, uh, developers have always shied away from it. Um, number one, because of, uh, the need for, uh, extreme amount of new housing was always a little bit questionable if we didn't have the economic development projects to go with it. But it's just a tough thing to do, uh, out of your own pocket and take all the risk. Uh, the thing that, uh, blight and extreme blight, uh, does with micro-tiff is it really does become a magnet, and I think you've seen that happen now with, uh, three or four projects that have come forward since North Platte has embraced this, uh, development tool, uh, which was introduced by a North Platte senator and improved through an amendment by another North Platte senator, and, uh, the community's really kind of taking the leadership role on this in the state of Nebraska. One thing I would propose, and one thing I'm gonna, uh, discuss with the Quality Growth Fund Committee, and then it would come subsequently to the Planning Commission City Council, is that so we can expedite the process a little bit, and not put you through project after project after project when it comes to blighting, is that we do a comprehensive plan on anything that's been predetermined to potentially qualify for extreme blight. We do a combination blight, extreme blight study, uh, on all the potentially qualifying areas, and if you did designate that as such, then, then just redevelopment plans could come forward in a more expeditious fashion. Uh, allows developers, when they're ready to move on a project, not to go through like a three-month, four-month process, get real discouraged in the process, or change their minds. And this would really help expedite that, so, gonna present that as a possibility, and have that discussion, and go through the three different, uh, city, uh, processes to, to see if, uh, the public officials agree with that assessment, so, um, thank Charlie for what he's doing, and, uh, it's a great project.
Any questions for Gary? Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to testify on this one? Going once. Going twice.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Bane, seconded by Von Velson to close the public hearing on this matter. Any discussion on that, if not, please vote. And the public hearing is now closed, we're gonna talk up here about this one now, any questions for Judy on this discussion?
No questions, but I'll just go ahead and, you know, abstain from the discussion and decision on this one.
Similar. So it's up to y'all.
Oh, sure.
Be great. Good idea.
Any further discussion?
I think it's a good place for this, it really fits, I know the two blocks that we're talking about, and it just kind of slams right into what this was designed for.
It's a good area for it. Hearing none, would entertain a motion?
I move to approve the resolution and recommended adoption of the extremely blighted determination study for North Platte, Nebraska, March two thousand twenty-four, as prepared by information art and approved all, uh, related actions.
Right, motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a click or vote. And that passes. That will go to city council, correct?
Yep, this will go to city council on May seventh for final decision.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Jett, and good luck. All right, item number five on the agenda tonight is another public hearing discussing consider action on a resolution regarding the city of North Platte, Nebraska blight and substandard study Horizon Builders, as prepared by Marvin Planning Consultants Incorporated. The propose, uh, the purpose of the hearing is to obtain public comment on whether the real estate described in this notice should be declared substandard and blighted pursuant to the Nebraska Community Development Law, and for planning commission to forward a recommendation on the study to the North Platte City Council. Study includes an estimated seventeen acres, generally between Newark Buffalo Bill Avenue to North Hayes Avenue, between West Nineteenth and the center line of the alley, south of West Eighteenth Street, Judy.
Okay, and you should have all received a copy of the review comments, attached to that, again, is a resolution and a copy of the blighted and substandard study. Um, the city of North Platte's planning commission's responsibility in the blight and substandard determination process is to take public comment on whether the real estate described should be declared substandard and blighted as pursuant to Nebraska Community Development Law, and if the study is in conformance with the city of North Platte comprehensive plan. The statements should be considered and confirmed are, the property as presented in the study meets the requirements to be declared substandard. The property as presented in the study meets the requirements to be declared blighted. The factors necessary to declare the property blighted and substandard are sufficiently distributed to impact development across the entire site. The development of this property to its full potential is in the best interest of the city of North Platte, and there are projects ready to develop if they can meet the financials goals of the developer. Again, Nebraska State Statute eighteen twenty-one oh three-three regulates the percentage of the city limits that may be declared blighted and substandard pursuant to Nebraska Community Development Law. States that the city of North Platte shall not designate more than thirty-five percent of the cities as blighted. Currently, the city limits of the city of North Platte contain eleven thousand eight hundred sixty-seven point three seven acres with two thousand eight hundred thirty-three point thirteen designated as blighted and substandard, or twenty-three point eight seven percent. The proposed study will designate an additional seventeen acres as blighted and substandard within the city limits, which would increase the city's percentage to twenty-four point oh one as designated blighted and substandard. Um, the city of North Platte, Nebraska Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Four, sets several goals, objectives, and action steps for housing in the community. Listed are the objectives to creating sufficient housing stock to provide safe choices. Mixed-use redevelopment, underutilized land with mixed uses that encourage new housing options, workforce housing, create alternative housing options such as senior or low to moderate income households. Housing alternatives provide incentives such as density bonuses for redevelopment of areas with substandard housing stock into affordable, safe housing, including housing programs that encourage construction of multifamily residential units. And keeping pace, prepare for future growth by extending city infrastructure to areas targeted for development. Planning staff recommends approval of the study and passage of the attached resolution. The study is in conformance with North Platte's comprehensive plan and meets the requirements to be declared substandard and blighted. By declaring this area as blight and substandard, the city remains below the thirty-five percent threshold, leaving acres available for future blight and substandard declarations. Allowing development of this property to its full potential is in the best interest of the city and the entire region.
Okay, oops, so, go ahead.
Um, the developer is here, if you have questions for him, or I'd be happy to answer any also.
So for the record, we saw this one other time, correct?
Um, you saw the subdivision come forward, yes.
All right. Uh, all right, this is a public hearing, uh, I went over the rules earlier, um, as to avoid my own instruction of being repetitive. I shall not read them again, so please abide by those, and without the public hearing is open, anybody like to come talk about this one? Come on up.
My name is Christy Smith, uh, twenty-four eighteen West Eighteenth Street. Um, as you can tell by my address, um, I live in the area of the, this proposed blight study. I was intrigued when I saw it on the city council's agenda, um, last, last week. Um, I didn't, I don't necessarily oppose the area becoming blighted and substandard, but how the study has been presented concerns me. As I live in the area, I am well acquainted with it, I have skimmed the study, I would have normally just skimmed the study and not given much thought, but the first thing that stuck out to me was the picture they used for the front of the study. Um, you may, I don't know if any of you had driven in that area, or if you just went off of just what was presented in the materials. Um, but again, I drive that street, those streets daily, multiple times a day. Um, the picture that they used, in my opinion, is very deceptive, um, I can assume, um, the area in the study, um, sorry, not assuming that, um, find it here. Seventy-four. It says that it is, um, the intersection of the center lines of North Buffalo Bill Avenue and platted right away of West Nineteenth Street, southerly along the center line of North Buffalo Bill Avenue to the extended center line of an alley located between West Eighteenth Street and West Seventeenth Street. Um, thence and easterly along said center line to the intersection of the center line of North Hayes Avenue. Um, I can only assume that this picture was taken on North Hayes Avenue, because that is the only street in that area that is not paved. At first, when I looked at it, I really thought it was an old picture of Eighteenth, because Eighteenth did not used to be, um, paved, but it has been paved. Um, for, um, this picture is not necessarily an accurate representation of the area. Um, and it caused me to go ahead and dig through the whole study a little bit more, because I get a little bit, um, interested in those kind of things, so the criteria that the study says were used to determine the blight definition for part A were a substantial number of deteriorating structures, paving conditions, sewer lines, and diversity of ownership. and diversity of ownership. And then for Part B, it was the average age of the structures. In the Nebraska Revised Statute 182103, the definition of blighted states, "Any combination of such factors as listed in the statute substantially impairs or arrests sound growth of the community, retards the provision of housing accommodation, or constitutes an economic or social liability, and is detrimental to the public health, safety, morals, or welfare in its present condition." According to this definition, the factors listed present would need to impair growth substantially. This area has seen nine brand-new houses built since 2019. That would classify as growth for the area. The nine new houses have also provided nine new families with housing accommodations. The last part of the definition deals with the area being detrimental to the public health and safety. I have lived in my current house for six years this month. Our neighborhood is relatively quiet. We have several older residents and a couple of young families in the area. This is a safe neighborhood. I'm a single young lady who lives alone. The number of times I have accidentally left my door unlocked would surprise most of you and probably shock my mother. I have never had anything stolen from my shed that I have dummy locked with a padlock. The, I have an elderly gentleman who lives behind me who makes sure to look out for me, make sure to check in on me every now and then, and I have a man who crosses the street who has a young family who also does the same. He'll tell me if you've seen anything that I should know about, or if there's something going on in any of the neighborhood. I like my lawn to look decent, and since I can't get grass to grow on my lawn, I have many lawn ornaments that I change out with the seasons. I have never had anything stolen or even messed with. The area maybe look different than most parts of the town, but the people who live here take good care of their properties, which is beneficial, not detrimental to public health. On page seventy-six, under the structure conditions, it says, "For the purpose of this analysis, any structure rated below good is considered to be in a deteriorating state and in need of basic or more considerate repairs. Based on the data, there are twelve primary structures as seen below in the photos." I understand that this is their chosen measuring stick to measure, but I can't entirely agree with those statements. Many of the houses are older, but most of my neighbors do a good job of upkeep. Could more be done? Yes, but unfortunately, that costs money that we don't have. It would also raise evaluations of their properties, which would then again cost them more money. My landlord has made several improvements over the last summer and plans to do more this summer. I don't know her financial situation, but I do know that she has not raised my rent once in the past six years, and for that, I am very blessed, even with all of the rising cost. The second condition that they stated they used to declare this blighted was the road conditions. Our roads are in pretty good condition, better than most I drive in the city. I work over just north of Welch Street at the daycare over there, so I drive pretty much the whole town on a daily basis. I don't understand the rating, especially since I drive them multiple times a day. I'm not sure where they get the eleven hundred feet that need, that they classifying, they are classifying as worn, out, poor, or unbuilt. The third condition is the sewer lines, and I do not claim to be any kind of an expert in this area. First I heard about it was last week at City Council. But I am confused about how a developer buys a property without knowing if it can be developed. The statement was made that is an unknown problem, but again, I will reference the nine new homes that have been recently built in the area that had no issues with the sewer lines. I'm not saying it isn't an issue, but I'm saying maybe it could be overcome in different ways. The final condition under A is diversity of ownership. The study states there are thirteen different property owners in the area. I looked at the site online, and there is actually only eleven owners. And it kind of stuck out to me as kind of weird, because there's thirteen parcels of lands, and two of them I know, my landlord won't. So that made me go through, and I just looked at all of them. So there's only eleven owners, not thirteen, which again seems like a minor oversight, but it calls into question the validity and honesty of the whole study, in my opinion. The final condition used in the study is under B, the age of structures. The study chose to only use half a city block. Why? That seemed weird to me, until I realized because of the nine new houses I referenced earlier. To make this study work and allow the developer to apply for TIF, they had to cookie cutter use what houses they could use. If you use the whole city block, the average age of the structures would only be thirty-five point two five years, effectively killing the study and not allowing the developer to use TIF. I'm not opposed to blighting areas of town that fit the definition, but I don't believe that this area fits the definition. The study is not an accurate, accurate representation of the area, and the inaccuracies lead me to believe it was built to accommodate the need for TIF, rather than being a trustworthy and accurate representation of the area. I have difficulty accepting that the project can only be accomplished with TIF, seeing as nine new houses have been built within the last five years without it. I don't know if the developer plans to sell the units or keep them, but with rental units, the sewer costs could be recouped either way, especially with the rent prices in North Platte. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Anybody else want to testify on this one? Come on up. Name an address, please.
Josh Rhodes, eight thirty Bronz Road, and I'm the developer on this project.
Okay.
So most of the initial amount of this, I guess you want to call it blight study or TIF came into play due to the sewer main. So the sewer main at Eighteenth and Hayes, and that's probably why he used that photo coming down Hayes. That sewer main sitting at three and a half foot of depth, which in order to get that sewer main extended another six, seven hundred feet back up the road, doesn't work at three and a half foot of depth, because there's not enough cover to cover the sewer main without it freezing. There is a, there's a possibility the city could go on and put a lift station in, and then we don't, we wouldn't have to accommodate that, nor would we need anything to do with TIF at that point. But from what I heard from council in last discussion is they don't want to put another lift station in North Platte, or do they want to maintain it? So that's what the option we went to to help cover the cost, because it had about a one point one million dollars worth of cost time. You add all that fill to raise the elevation of what we're developing in order to accommodate that sewer main to get the gravity flow to come into that main at Eighteenth and Hayes around the corner, so. That's where, and the nine houses she's referencing, I have no idea exactly where they're at, but there could be connecting to an existing main that's probably going off of Eighteenth into an alley maybe, because I do know directly to the, I think that's Eighteenth that we're fronted on. I think the south there's houses, that sewer main alley, or the sewer main goes through the alley there. We have no way to access that. We'd have to go through somebody's house and through their property to get to it. So we have to go back up and connect it to main at Eighteenth and Hayes on the corner, so. Kind of give it a reference of, I guess, why the perspective of what we're doing has changed, so.
What, what's in that? You said to increase the cost about one point one million of the project to get into the, what, are you talking about having to raise the entire site?
Yeah, there's, I think there's roughly like three and a half foot of fill that's got to go on that entire, like, six acres in there of ours alone, in order to accommodate that sewer, gravity feed on the sewer. And I know the city didn't want another lift station, because that was a discussion we'd already had with them too. Because I guess it costs them about four hundred thousand dollars to put a lift station in. Just put a lift station, then they have to maintain it and deal with it over the years too, and then replace it again eventually. I don't know all the logistics of that, it was just some conversation we had had, so.
And the sewer's on Hayes?
Sewer. I think it's just a little bit north of Eighteenth on Hayes is the connection point. It's actually on that gravel road there. Yep.
Is the ground that's there has sufficient compaction to go right on top of it, or will you have to excavate and then compact and?
That I don't know yet either.
So you could potentially have more expansive.
Potentially, yeah. There's been no core samples drilled.
Yeah.
You know, drilling in there, you have to see exactly what the, I guess the stability of the ground is, but that came up, we're in a, one of the building inspectors brought that to my attention last week, we were in a meeting with them.
I know, I know several projects that that's had to happen, is that ground there, existing land is not, doesn't have sufficient compaction to support a structure, so you've got to excavate, then compact, bring in dirt, compact it, and then go with your fill.
And that definitely could be a possibility. That expense, we haven't gotten that far, because we've kind of hit the bricks until we figure out how we resolve this sewer issue, as far as getting all these units connected to that, so.
Any more questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Anybody else want to testify on this one? Going once. Going twice.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Bain, seconded by Davies to close the public hearing. Any discussion on that motion? Not Michelle, please. And the public hearing is now closed. Okay, we're gonna talk about this one up here now amongst ourselves, all right? Yeah, Eighteenth Streets, yeah, Eighteenth, that's nice. I drive by there all the time, so I, because I work out in that country.
Valid points on both sides.
Agreed.
I guess my question would be is, like Marvin Planning, how do they determine the area that is in a blighted?
All of it is kind of obscure, because, I mean, you are correct. You're not going to want to go get houses that were just recently constructed. But if you look at any of the blight studies that are done, they're all, you know, all over the place to, you know, potentially get the areas that do fit the blight.
It would be interesting to see if you did go across the alley and include that half a block, plus the habitat houses, which are the ones that
That are probably the new.
What that percentage would be with these seven lots, which.
Is that habitats just right on the other side of that alley?
Yeah, it's on Cody. Yeah, across the alley from that ground, right off Cody and.
Is it right here? That's what these are?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is Cody.
That was right there, if it was going to walk south.
Right there.
They're on the other side.
If they drop this off a block, if they drop this all the way down, I think this would also run into the port.
That's the whole thing, you know, you could, you could adjust this out wider and collect those houses, and maybe not quite make it. Then you could probably go out wider.
I don't want to make it again.
And make it back in, so it's an adjustment of, you know, do, how much do we need to include to make it look like what it is? But knowing the area,
Yeah.
I think you could very easily do it with the nine new houses.
Right, I would agree.
If they got, if they took these seven, eight lots here, it's gonna.
Right, because they're not gonna just go up and take them.
Down Seventeenth Street that's, you know.
And frankly, if you went on west of Buffalo Bill.
Yep, you're there again too.
You're there again too. So I mean, it's, I, I understand the question, it goes both ways. You could absolutely go across the alley and collect those houses, but you can go across Buffalo and, and.
Collect more houses.
So.
One of the other reasons is they want to keep the acres on the lower end.
Right.
Yeah, and, and to answer that part of the question, the city's got a motivation to keep the number of acres in a blight and substandard designation as low as possible. So that's part of why this stuff gets done the way it is. But it is, it does seem rather arbitrary, and in fact, that question, and a valid point, so.
I don't pretend to know the developer's business, but it would seem to me that you could develop a lot of lots and leave a couple of them for green space if you can't run sewer. I mean, if, if the slope's not going to work, just leave the green space. Don't build houses out there, we'd have to tell you.
Well, I don't think you could build any of them.
Yeah.
It's, it's, so I actually talked to one of the council people who had some conversation about this back in the fifties when this, the original sewer main was put back in, when they dug until they had water, and then they just stopped, because they didn't have a good way of de-watering at that time. Now, if you, if, if you remember when they put in the sewer main out on Adams Street, that's Adams where those, the chamber development is, correct, Gary? They de-watered that entire thing to get the sewer low enough so that they wouldn't have this issue going forward. So you're trying to correct the, you're trying to correct an issue that tying back into, you know, sixty, seventy-year-old infrastructure with a new development, it's.
You remember the first sentence I said was?
I understand.
I don't really know about developing. I had a question, but okay, thank you, that helps.
Yeah, it's, we run into it out at Nebraska nowadays whenever we're trying to build anything out there. It's just the water table's so bloody high out there, it's, it's a challenge.
We're in a riverbed.
Yep.
We're in a riverbed.
So I certainly sympathize with the developer in this case, yeah.
So the sewer is that high because of that, all the way down North Hayes?
There's not really sewer down North Hayes, so the sewer stops basically just a little bit north. On Eighteenth, there's a, a hookup that was stopped at Hayes, so it doesn't run up or down Hayes. So that's the one that he has to tap into and then get the.
Down Eighteenth, east and west.
Actually, the alley south of Eighteenth is where the sewer line is. So, you know, yeah, it would be nice if it was in Eighteenth, because then he could just tap in in Eighteenth and be fine, but it's actually behind those houses in that alley, south of Eighteenth. That's where the sewer line is.
Come down.
So he's got to hook up with that haze over there, that's just, just a little bit. No, no.
The only other one would be over on Buffalo Bill, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Would it be better to, I'm just spiffballing here, but would it be better to go on the north side of that development and into what would eventually be, what is it, Nineteenth or Twentieth Street back there?
Nineteenth. The problem with doing that is the city only has half of Nineteenth Street right away. We don't have the north half of Nineteenth Street right away. So it would be tough to, to do that in just the, what do we have, thirty foot, twenty-five foot, I think is what we have. When they dedicated the, when they did the subdivision, they dedicated thirty foot of that right away for potentially future Nineteenth Street.
Because Buffalo actually has more modern sewer, doesn't it? When they redid.
I think so.
When they redid that, and they, because I know there's a lift station out on our property that nobody likes.
And if Buffalo has more modern sewer, and this abuts Buffalo.
It doesn't abut Buffalo. It's about, what, a half a block, block away from Buffalo.
It's a pretty good hunk away.
Although the whole area is included, this is not part of the development. Those are houses right there.
There's a house right there.
So he's wanting to develop this area.
Being the dotted line all the way around here.
That's the study area.
But that's the study area.
But the development area is actually the part that's not in yellow.
Yeah, that abuts Hayes, not Buffalo, so.
You couldn't get sewer down here.
That's what I was questioning.
I don't think so, because I'm not sure. I mean, I would have to ask Brent if he could do that. But going down Nineteenth, normally, normally we try to put sewer in alleys, not in streets. We use the streets for water.
And even if you could, the developer, it would be at the developer's cost, right? So we'd be right back to square one.
Yes, either way, the developer's going to pay for it.
Unless the sewer on Buffalo was sufficiently deep enough that you wouldn't have to build up the pad three and a half feet. That's, that was my question.
Yeah.
You still have to pay for the distance to get it to the corner.
Correct, which would, which would be, I'm suspecting fairly expensive. Expensive no matter how you do it.
Yes, exactly, because you can't just tap it.
But I guess the question is, it gets, I'm sorry.
Maybe it should be a park.
Should be a what?
A park.
Park.
Well.
How about housing with a park?
It's a homeless. In the park.
So I guess the, the, the way I always come back to these things is there's five bullet points on the front of this thing that we're supposed to test. So as presented in the study, does it meet the requirements to, to be declared blighted, declared substandard? Does it meet the requirements to be declared blighted? Do the factors necessary to declare the property blighted and substandard? Are they sufficiently distributed to impact development across the entire site? That development of this property with its full potentials in the best interest of the city of North Platte, that there are projects ready to develop. Seems to me that point five has already been answered, because this had started and then had to stop because of what they found. You could argue four, but certainly developing on the north side in an area that's been blank for a while, I think you could, I could understand the argument that it's in the city's best interest. So then you're down to points one, two, and three. I'd welcome comments on that.
Well, the study as it's written meets those, in my opinion, one, two, and three.
You can argue where to draw the line.
Yeah. But if we accept this study.
What was that, Jeff?
Well, I think that's the test. If you answer that yes, then by misreading that counselor, that's our job is to review those five points here, is right? That's correct.
I move to approve the resolution and recommend adoption of the city of North Platte, Nebraska blight and substandard study, Horizon Builders, prepared by Marvin Planning Consultants, Inc., and. approval of related actions.
Second.
I'm going to award that to Davies. I thought I heard it first. Motion by World, seconded by Davies to approve the resolution and recommend adoption. Any more discussion on the matter? Michelle, please. And it's been, the motion passes.
This will go to city council on May seventh.
Buck, thank you for your testimony. Good points. Item number six, any old business? Item number seven, any new business? Got nothing?
Got nothing?
If not, we stand adjourned.